We ask your blessings on them and their families and their safety. Lord, we'll remind you of the tragedy that beheld our state this past week. And pray, Lord, for those families and school friends and that community as they look for answers and look to heal. Lord, let us be a part of the solution and the answers in any way we can. Bless our meeting tonight, Lord, and give wisdom to our council members. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. At this time, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. As I mentioned earlier, it's a little bit after 6:30. We have all members of council present. First order of business tonight, ceremonial items we have none, so I'll move right on to the approval of the minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes for February 5, 2018.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the minutes as amended. Weren't they amended slightly? Or does that not count because I did it so quickly?
It was done beforehand.
Fabulous.
As I said, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes for February 5, 2018.
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, next item on the agenda is our public comment portion of the meeting. This is the time where folks can address the council on anything that may not be on our agenda this evening. I have one written request, but I think this wants to go on item 12, correct? Okay. Anybody like to address council? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public comment portion and move on to our consent agenda. Tonight, our consent agenda are items number four through 10. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Henkin?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's presented.
Second.
Motion second. Councilman Henkin, anything?
No, sir. Looks good.
Deputy Mayor?
Good.
Going to the right?
Looks good.
To my right, I should say. No? All righty. Motion on the table is to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number 11. Let me just catch up here. Item number 11 is ordinance number 1666, City Corporate Limits. Mr. Groot, can you do us the honors and read this by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, redefining the corporate municipal boundaries, city limits of the city of Oviedo, and amending the city charter of the city of Oviedo in accordance with the provisions of section 166-031 Florida statutes and other controlling law. Providing for purpose and objectives, providing for a revised legal description of the corporate municipal boundaries, city limits of the city of Oviedo, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. The requested ordinance redefines the city's corporate boundaries. It goes back to the 1967 incorporation of the city. And then it attaches to that, that legal description, all of the annexations that have occurred since 1967, as well as the right of ways that are associated. And so tonight, we're asking that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1666.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council on ordinance number 1666? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Henkin?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1666.
Second?
We have motion second. Councilman Henkin, anything?
No, sir. Just tying everything in and putting it on paper.
Councilmember?
Looks good.
Councilman Pollak?
Looks good.
Deputy Mayor?
Good.
All righty. Seeing and hearing none, I will call the question, just so everybody realizes, this is really just squaring off the boundaries of the city with all the different lands that have been annexed over years. So just making the map match kind of what we are. With all that being said, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and ordinance 1666 passes. Moving along, we're up to item number 12. This is ordinance number 1667, Street Lighting Assessment District. Mr. Groot, will you do us the honors and read this ordinance by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, creating a special assessment district for the purpose of providing the design, permitting, acquisition, construction, and any and all other related or necessary cost and actions that pertain to the street lighting assessment program located within the city limits. Providing for legislative findings and intent, and adopting an expert's report pertaining thereto. Providing for attachments and the incorporation of exhibits. Providing for the district to be known as the Street Lighting Assessment Program Special Assessment District. Providing for a short title. Providing for legislative findings and intent. Providing for the properties located within the district. Providing for the governing of the district by the city council of the city acting as a governing board. Providing for a formula for special assessments made within the district and assessment methodology, rates, and alternatives. Providing for a list of assessments to be made and collected based on application of the assessment formula pertaining to the ownership of properties benefited and fiscal procedures. Providing for a method of collection. Providing for other associated and related matter, and the taking of implementing administrative action. Providing for a savings provision. Providing for conflicts. Providing for the separability. Providing for codification, and the correction of script errors, and providing for an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to create the Special Assessment Street Lighting District. The city of Oviedo has approximately 3,850 streetlights within public right of way, and that's split between two service providers, Duke Energy and Florida Power and Light. Traditionally, the city has paid for street lighting out of the general fund. If you remember back at the adoption of the fiscal year 1718 budget, we did split away part of the cost into the local option gas tax fund. In order to try to ease the burden on the general fund, as well as shift the monies back out of the local gas tax, so the staff's proposing the creation of this district to create a funding source for street lighting. This ordinance is the first step in the process for creating the district. First thing we have to do is create the geographical boundaries of the district, which is what this ordinance does. The next part of it, we'll have a series of events where we will be entering, bringing to you interlocal agreements with the property appraiser and the tax collector. We will also have to bring to you a methodology for the assessment itself. Those will all be done throughout the year, as we proceed, to try to get it in place for October 1. Tonight, we're asking that you conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1667. There were some questions that council had at the first reading. That one of the questions was, what would be the fees associated with the interlocal agreements with the tax collector and the property appraiser? We were able to determine that the administrative cost of the class of tax collector would be $4,600. But we did have not, we confirmed that there will not be any administrative costs with the property appraiser. Council also asked about other local governments that have enacted similar districts. Our financial advisors at Willdan, they were able to provide us with a list of other communities that have enacted street lighting districts. We are in the process of reaching out to them to understand their methodologies, to determine if they are something that we could use here in Oviedo. And then lastly, I believe it was the deputy mayor asked if we could get some more background information on the cost of street lighting through the years. We were able to go all the way back to fiscal year 2005, and all of those costs were provided in your memorandum. With that, Mayor, like I said, we recommend that they conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1667.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, this is a public hearing. I do have one written request, and that's from Mr. Tommy Minton.
I know, I know. Name and address for the record.
Please.
Tommy Minton, 344 Timberwood Trail, Oviedo, Florida. So I don't have anything written to prepare, so I don't go off the cuff, so give me some latitude on this one. You all know me. You know I sit out here in this seat just about every meeting, so you know I have a pretty good idea of what's going on. But I am gonna, and I debated whether or not to speak tonight. I went over it, over it, and over it, but I feel like out of a matter of principle, I need to come up and just say and voice that I'm against the assessment. And it's out of a matter of principle, not necessity. The streetlights, I'm all in favor of. In fact, I've had a engage in a public Facebook debate with a certain council member up here about the necessity for streetlights in the city. I do believe they are necessary for safety. So that's not what I'm against. I mean, I believe we need to keep maintaining them, upgrade as needed and everything. It's just the way to pay for it. It feels like a tax. I know it's non ad liborem, but it feels like a tax. And we've always prided ourselves, the council's always repeatedly mentioned how we have one of the lowest millage rates in the county. So this just feels like a way around that, to not have to raise the millage just to pay for the streetlights in a different way. I usually don't come up here and say anything unless I have a solution. And unfortunately, I just don't have one. I did some research, I asked around, I'd hoped to find another way. I looked at the possibility of using developer impact fees, but after some inquiries, it doesn't look like that's possible. Maybe there's some other fee out there we could use. Maybe there's a way to manipulate the general fund and look for $500,000, which I understand is what the gap is here, and take it away from something that may not be as necessary to pay for the necessary. It's the same thing I told the county when they wanted to raise their millage rate this year. I was all in favor for the fire, but was there something else we didn't need that could pay for it? So that's all I'm really kind of requesting here, is that is there another way to do this? Have we dug as deep as possible to find any other way to pay for this other than what feels like another tax? I appreciate it, guys. I know, I know you have a hard job. I got it. I get it. But in good conscience, I just felt like I had to say it.
Thank you, Tommy. That's the only written request I had on this item. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council? Just name and address for the record, please.
My name's Bob McKernan. I'm at 850 Mimosa Trail. Somewhat what the gentleman was talking about. But from my standpoint, I'm looking at it, and I'm looking at the two taxes where your current fees, we all, there are taxes, where we currently pay through, in my case, Duke Power. 16% of my bill every month goes to the city. There's another tax that goes to the state, and then it gets done some. But the 16% comes directly to you guys. I understand the 10% can't be moved up. I've read the instructions, the state instruction on that will not allow us to do that. The other one, that's the 6%, the franchise fee, that could be amended. However, I understand that's not an easy process to do. So my other question, though, looking at my, or my real question, looking at this, and this is out of the budget, the adopted budget that's going to be presented to the state of the city, I guess, in March. Unfortunately, I won't be able to make it. I have other obligations. And that is, I've noticed the revenue from those two fees, which are associated with electric usage, those two fees are not growing what the way we would think. In fact, one of them, the franchise fee for the electricity only, and that's all I'm talking about, that has actually dropped in the adopted budget. I don't understand that with all the development we've got going on in the city, how we could see the fees dropping over the last, since 2014. It doesn't make sense to me. This is just another way of trying to find another tax. We just had a 3% increase according to, again, to the adopted budget on the stormwater runoff to pay for something. And we all know what that is. That's got its own set of problems. But I think, I don't think we had, and on top of that, the 2018 FY18 budget that we're looking at has the reduction 580,000, give or take a few, for the streetlight budget over what they've been, we've been seeing every year. And I'm going, wow. Where did all that money go? In the meantime, our revenue coming in went up 1.2%, 1.2 million. So where's all the money going? I mean, I spent some time going through the budget, because the budget will usually lead you to where the issues are at. And I think we have a spending problem. I don't think we have a revenue problem. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else like to address council? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move we approve ordinance number 1667.
Second.
A motion and a second. Councilmember?
I think Mr. Minton is spot on. It doesn't just feel like a tax, it actually is a tax. It's shifting around how we tax people. The way we pay for streetlights right now is strictly with millage. It's based on the value of the property, and then you pay a percentage of that towards streetlights. What the shift here is towards is assessing it some other way. And I've looked at a lot of the different ways that were proposed by our consultant, by Willdan, and none of them feel fair. So the reason I can support this is because by creating a special lighting district, we can still charge millage. But this will allow us to separate the millage out into a different place, and to keep track of the streetlights, and all of the maintenance, and replacement of poles, and switching over to LEDs, and all this stuff, to track it separately, and find out, what are we really doing? Can we tighten up what we're spending on these things? And how can we minimize the cost, not maximize the cost? So I'm in favor of the district, so we put that money in a special bucket, not because I want to shift the taxes. So I think if we create a district, perhaps there will be a need to, and I think I've gone back and asked the city manager and Mr. Boop last time to back into, what millage would it take for us to meet our budget? Now, here's the difference between what's been proposed, which is to tax by something besides millage, and what I would like to see happen is separate district that uses millage. If we use millage, there, that we are capped out at charging 10 mills taxes by the state constitution. If we keep charging by millage, this counts against our cap. There are some places in Florida that have reached their cap. So they're putting their fire department in a special district, they're putting lights in a special district, and things like that. So just you can kind of see that there's two buckets that this could go in. So I'd like to keep a millage, but this will create a framework where we can evaluate it over time and find out what makes sense going forwards. At this time, well, at this last budget cycle, we did not use just the general fund. We had to pull from another source, and it's perfectly legal for us to pull from that source. And with this, as with anything in a city's budget, if you decide to pull from, where would we pull it from? Was it the local option gas tax? So we pulled from that fund. So that is allowed to be used for this. It's also allowed to be used to pave roads. So we didn't pave as much as we could have, but we lit the streetlights without raising millage. So it's a give and take, and that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Great. Thank you. Who was my second?
I think I was.
I'm sorry. Councilman Britt, deputy mayor?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I think Megan has hit it on the head. It is a tax, but we paid for it this year as a deficit out of the gas tax money, which I think we should be using towards improving our roads. We've got some traffic issues we need to fix. Brian, if you could help me, or maybe Jerry, the franchise fees, do those just go into the general fund?
Jerry, why don't you come on up?
Are they vectored over to a specific reason, or it just goes to the general fund?
I guess the franchise fees have been dropping. Some questions were asked.
Correct. Jerry Boop, Director, City of Oviedo. The franchise, excuse me, the franchise fees go directly into the general fund. A proportion of those are used to cover debt service. So both the utility taxes and the franchise fees are both used to cover debt service. Anything remaining covers the general expenses of the general fund.
And are those revenues actually going down?
I'm not prepared to answer that question tonight, but I can do some research for you and get back to you on that.
Okay. You know, whether it is or not, I'd like to know why.
Yeah, what we have to realize, you would expect the revenues to increase with the growth of the city. However, those revenues are also impacted by weather. So if you have a fluctuation, if it's a cooler year, you will be taxing as much, which we had a very rainy year last year. And we try to be conservative when we do the budget process, because we don't want to overbudget and then end up in an unexpected deficit throughout the year. But I would have to do some more research to answer that question accurately.
Okay. Thanks. Can I just add something?
Absolutely.
Telephone taxes. Telephone taxes are becoming almost nonexistent, correct?
Correct.
The cable franchise fees are gone. Just about, right?
They're declining. Everything's declining.
Right.
And the way I look at this...
So now, explain to everybody, because I think there's this misconception, on how the budget's built.
Right.
How much of the budget comes from real estate taxes? 11 million?
11 million, which is roughly about 30%, 33% maybe.
Of our $30 million budget, thereabouts, for round numbers.
Correct.
30% of it comes from property taxes. So how much of it comes from franchise fees, which every year have been declining because people don't have home phones, they don't, aren't using as much electricity, they're not using as much water, they're...
About another 2 million comes from franchise fees, and about another 2 million, I believe, comes from utility taxes, roughly.
Right.
Just off the top of my head.
Sure, yeah. No, that's all I'm trying to get at. So we're only at 14 million of a $30 million budget.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And I guess if I could have Bobby come up and tell us what he's got for road paving. Bobby, can you come up and? And the reason we're, you know, trying to do this is we do want to keep paving our roads. We started this, what, in '05, '06? And it's perpetual. We kind of recycled this over 20 years or so, right?
What specifically do you want to know? What specifically are you asking for?
The repaving activity where we're going to do the radar, is that completed for the second round?
It's almost done. Yes, sir.
Okay. So that's going to give us a whole batch of other roads in need.
Resets our priorities, yes, sir, for surfacing for the next 10, 20 years.
So, and that's what we need, the gas tax money for?
Yes, sir. It's what a traditional revenue has been.
And normally, we're spending, what, about a half million dollars a year on paving?
Anywhere from half a million, 800,000, and it'd be even higher this year.
Okay. All right. So that's, that's the crux we're in. We can pave, or we can, we can have lights, but we, you know, we'd have to give something up if we go status quo. We did it for one year, and it's, we can't sustain it. It's a simple matter.
One thing that we've never had in the past, that we're, it'd be interesting for our revenue sources, we've never had a way to do capital improvements for streetlights, to add streetlights. We've already always had to take away from that light funding source. So something we need to look at and find a way to resolve is a means to do capital improvements with streetlights.
Good point. Thanks. That's all I have.
Could I ask a question while you're here? Now, if we were to do a special lighting district and do millage, that, my understanding, is it could not be used as a funding source for streetlight improvements, but if we use some mechanism other than millage, it could. Is that correct?
I honestly can't speak to that.
Okay.
I don't know.
And maybe Willdan, if anybody from here, there is, is here, could help us understand if one way of determining how to tax gives different options for financing and improvement, capital improvements?
We'll have to research that one for you.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Certainly.
Anything else?
Hey, Bobby, just a quick question. If we have this one fund for streetlights, dedicated streetlights...
Yes, sir.
I saw capital improvements happening with the streetlights, just like we have at all of our other capital improvement budgets. So rather than just maintaining lights like we do now with lights on, you'll be able to actually expand the lighting.
Yes, sir. That's accurate.
And I think LED, not that it is necessarily part of whether we do this or not, but LED throughout the entire city, plus new poles throughout the city, will also be part of these packages.
Yes, sir. I should also add that LED doesn't necessarily mean costs are going down. There are actually costs that increase to go LED as well, which I found surprising, but it's actually quite true with Duke Energy.
Right. Right. But the LEDs give brighter light, more natural light...
Yes, sir.
Shine down, new poles.
Definitely an improvement.
Okay. Thank you.
Over time, is it less expensive? Like, I'm interested in...
The energy costs go down, but what happens is apparently some of the infrastructure has to, have to increase or improve some of the infrastructure, if they're able to handle the hardware for LED. Some of the existing infrastructure can't support it. It's too heavy.
But over time, I think, is what councilmember was asking. Over time, I mean, obviously, when that, when that infrastructure cost is paid, then the lighting, in theory, the cost should go down. Now, that's going to be dependent on Duke and Florida Power.
I would like to believe that, but Duke Energy may have some other considerations on that.
Yeah, that's going to be Duke and Florida Power who...
Yes, sir.
Kind of controls it. Unless we just put in all our own and put a meter on them, but that'll be a discussion for another day. Thank you, Bobby.
Yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor, you still have the floor?
I'm done.
You're good.
Thanks.
Bob?
I mean...
Councilman Pollak?
This one, you know, this one...
This is in your wheelhouse.
No. This one, I mean, as long as we're, we're trying to recover the revenue, we're trying to recover funds to meet a specific expense. And so if, if that is, you know, if that's what we're doing, and that's what we continue to do, which, which it is, I have no problem with this. It's a way to kind of pull these things out. And I know it's shifting from, from general fund to these special, special assessments. But one thing, we're not even close to those 10 mills. So that's, I mean, that's not, that's not even a consideration right now, to that we're trying to shift this stuff just because we want to continue, or because we want to be at that 10 mills. We're not even close to it. But this is a way to specifically identify certain districts, or this lighting district, to make sure that, that it's funded properly through the, this funding source. You know, I have no problem with this. I think that, you know, the lighting does need to be upgraded. A lot of, a lot of it's been the maintenance on it, and some of the areas in Oviedo, there's, it's dark. You go around Lockwood, 419, there's a lot of dark areas. There's dark areas on Mitchell Hammack that they, we need to work towards, you know, bringing these, these areas up with some street lighting. So anyways, I have no problem with that.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Henkin?
Well, I don't think it's any surprise, you know, that I have never been in favor of a streetlight fee, so sorry to be on the short end of the stick here, but all the points that you all make are kind of valid, but I do want to just address one thing, that this city has no spending problem. And if you sit and look at our budget, and I've done 12 of them in a row, we are probably one of the most leanest cities in the country as far as spending. as far as spending. And when we go through our budget, I mean, last year, it was, it was funny, because we had Megan and Bob just came on, I think Keith was away that day, but we did the budget, and Jerry told us we had an eight hundred thousand dollar deficit. The mayor and I just let it roll off our back, because we knew that's what it is every year, and we'd figure out a way to balance it. And then you two guys just being here, oh, that's a lot. But now, now they understand. So you have to remember, an Oviedo on the park, I'm going to remind everybody, you all voted for that. Not this council, not the councils before. And, and that was the will of the people. And that's a big expense that we have, is Oviedo on the park. Our police department and fire department, they're the two biggest line items in our budget. And I can tell you what, as long as I sit here, whenever they need something, they're going to get it, because I don't have a problem walking any street in this city at any time of night because of them. So, you know, when I look at our budget, I mean, we are probably one of the most frugal cities anywhere, when you go, when you actually go read the budget. So, you know, spending problem, you know, it's a talking point. There is no spending problem. The problem is, is that we have a growing city with needs that have to be, that have to be addressed. And as soon as we stop addressing those needs, then we're going to have emails from the citizens saying, why aren't you guys taking care of this? You know, my own, my own feeling is, is that I think these streetlight fees and all these other fees come out of fear that the Florida legislature, they keep walking all over cities. I mean, they, they, you know, to me, their ultimate goal is to not have cities, not have counties, and that there'll be one massive government. And then we have a, you know, a huge problem. You know, you won't have the charm of a winter park, you know, the, the family, you know, one of the top ten best places for families like Oviedo. You know, cities, we know, we know our citizens well. So I think if you really, on face value, maybe it looks that way, but when you go through our budget, and anybody can go get it, it's on our website, I encourage you to take a look at it, you will see, you know, down to the last penny, that this, and this budget here is going to be really hard. Last year, through some creative magic, that our staff was able to pull off in deferring things and whatever, but everything costs money, folks. And when you have a city with as full of services as Oviedo does, it's quite amazing that, you know, of seven cities in Seminole County, I think we have four cities higher than us in millage rate. And we do so much, but just remember, your two biggest ticket items are the fire and police in the city, and they must be funded, and they must be there. Streetlights, you know, I, this is not a surprise to my members. I've never liked it. I try to look for other ways, and I think that there are other ways, and the budget process, I'll bring those up, so. But, you know, I just want you all to be comfortable. You know, you guys vote for this huge project over there, Oviedo on the park, and it's beautiful. Don't get me wrong, but, you know, that's not something that we just said, let's do, and it costs a lot of money to run it, our park system. Everybody loves our park system. Not cheap to run those parks. So if you all want lower millage, what we could do is we could shut some of these parks. We can shut some of these services like we did back in, you know, 2007, when we had the Great Recession, 2008. You know, we can shut things off. And I think, you know, from the time I got here to now, we have probably fifty, sixty less employees. And back then, you know, people wearing multiple hats. So I think, you know, you really should be proud of your city. You know, today, I think everybody loves to, you know, especially when we see stuff on the news at night, you know, we're all very cynical. And, and I am very cynical, especially the federal government and governments higher than us. But, you know, this city, I'm, I'm pretty proud of, especially when we do our budget. I have a staff that is incredible. So it's not just, we don't just sit up and say, well, you know, there's forty thousand people that can pay the bill, let's just raise this, raise that. So just keep that in mind, you know, as you, as you go ahead. But like I said, I don't think it's a surprise that I'm not a fan of that. I think there's some ways we can get there. I don't think it's the time to talk about them. But I don't like fees. I don't like taxes. I don't like fees. I try to just work whatever I can. But I will say this, in, to my colleagues here, they bring up good points, because there are some things down the road, I think it's a little premature. The legislature does certain things, and we can't charge millage, then you got to pay for things, you know. So I think that's where it's coming from. But for now, I don't think it's a great idea. So just leave it at that. Mr. Mayor?
All righty. Well, we've got, you know, to Councilman Harkin's point, we have the second lowest millage rate in Seminole County. I mean, us and Winters Springs are neck and neck. There's, there's a great debate all the time between the mayor and I, whose is lower, and it depends on who's on the calculator, but...
And they don't have a fire department.
Right, and they don't have a fire department.
They gave that away.
So, you know, when folks look at what you're charged for services here in the city of Oviedo, and you look at all the services that you have in the city of Oviedo compared to all the other cities in Seminole County, there is a lot that goes on in this city. It's just amazing what we have here. And other cities, as Councilman Harkin just pointed out, don't even have a, have their own fire departments. They have them rolled into the county under the guise that they were going to save money, and it actually ended up costing them more money. So we're a full-service city. As I had Mr. Boop point out, millage and franchise fees make up less than half of the budget. You know, there's, there's costs, and those costs have to come from somewhere. Public safety, that probably takes up about sixty percent, I think, of the budget. So sixty percent of the twenty-nine million goes to two departments. So, you know, I know nobody likes it, and we all pay it. I mean, we're not immune to it up here if we do it. So it's, we just have to have a way to balance the budget without robbing Peter to pay Paul, because all we're doing now is putting off rotary paving. So, you know, yes, we can raise the millage, and that's easy to do, but then we don't solve the problem of the streetlights just being mixed into the general fund. And for those who've been in the city a long time, may remember, I mean, way back, back in the day, and those who are here will remember this, we didn't have enterprise funds in our budget. Our budget was one big pot of money, including the water fees. So what would happen is, everything would just get paid out of general fund. So the water system was subsidized by the general fund. The lighting, lighting was subsidized by the general fund. Everything was the general fund. Back in 2003 is when we started to create, three or four was it, Brian? Three, right?
Three.
Right?
Right, it was created in three, but first fiscal year, '03, '04.
Mr. Seaw. Yeah. We created enterprise funds for everything. So your water bill, when you get your water bill, and you write that check to the city of Oviedo, and you pay for your water, your garbage, and your stormwater, those three items are enterprise funds. That money does not come into the general fund. The money for the water in the sewer goes into the water and sewer fund. The water for the garbage goes into the garbage fund. The water for the stormwater goes into the stormwater fund. That's all those dollars are used for. So then you take those items that pay for themselves, and now you go over to the general fund, and you still have streetlights being paid for out of the general fund. So this is a way of creating an enterprise fund for streetlights throughout the city. And that way, when Mr. Wyatt and the public work staff gets calls from residents, which we get, about dark areas in the city, Mitchell Hammack Road is a constant, well, not a constant, but a frequent complaint, that it's dark down in the side farms, the, it's dark on the other side of the road. We can start to improve these things with an enterprise fund and a capital plan, whereas right now, Mr. Wyatt has to do is he'll, he'll come forward and go into the budget meetings that I'm assuming are starting very soon, Brian?
Have already started.
Okay. And he'll say, I need a million dollars for new streetlights, and Mr. Cobb will say, okay, well, that's a great request. And then as Councilman Harkin and everybody here have said, we get down to budget time, Mr. Boop comes forward and says, well, with just our needs, we're eight hundred thousand short. Well, what do you think went away? Maintenance goes away, streetlights go away, and we start to get behind the eight ball. So there, there, there's just certain cost of government that needs to be paid for. And as I told the scouts before, because they had a great question about how we pay for things, when we were out in the hall, and I explained to them, we don't make items. We're not a business. We're not making widgets. We're not selling things. We, we, we're not here to turn a profit. We're here to provide services. And the only way we can pay for those services are by fees that we bring in. And, you know, with sixty, let's see, eleven million out of, so that's sixty-seven percent of your budget, budget's dependent on fees, not taxes. Something's got to give somewhere. And like Councilman Harkin said, we can shut things down. But boy, I remember doing that when the economy crashed. And now, everybody was very understanding. Things were crashing everywhere. They got it. They like it, but, but they got it. Now, things are going well, you know, and folks are enjoying services, and we've got things opened up again. Now, now we've got to continue to maintain them, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Now, just one thing I wanted to talk about, the budget, because I think it's, we've gotten a really good conversation, is that, you know, we don't use the term often, line item, veto, but a lot of people have heard the term, you know, you know, governors have it, you know, sometimes the president has it. But we have it. And when we go through our budget, and if you take a look at it, it's a big, I mean, it's a pretty substantial book with all the different enterprise funds, departments, whatever. But the five of us and our staff, I mean, we look at every line. It takes months to do this budget, five, six months to finally get it right. And we look at every single line, every year, and we say, is this needed? You know, is this benefiting the citizens? And I think if, I would just challenge anybody that looks at our budget to come back and say, you guys are wasting your money there, you know, because I don't see it. And I've looked at twelve of them in a row, and I am the most, you know, discerning person when that budget comes. I'm calling up, like, why do we need this? Why do we need that? And a lot of times, I get answers, you know, and this is why we need it. Some things, I already know the answers. Some things, I know the answers and ask anyway. But we look at every single line. So, you know, if there's something in a budget that somebody doesn't like, you know, tell us. We'll always take a look at it. But I know when I get that, we're going to have a budget meeting, what, Brian, in March sometime?
Usually March is the kickoff.
Yeah, the first one. And up on that board, it's going to be a million, two million deficit. And then we're going to start going through each line item. Okay, how do we, how do we get there, you know, to try to bridge this gap? And we're really good at it, you know. We figure it out. And last year, you know, people didn't see the pain, but it was hard. And we didn't raise the millage. And we got all this nice stuff here. So like the mayor said, you know, you have to, you have to pay for it if you want to be a full-service city. You know, the alternative is, we can hand our charter over to the county, okay? It's all yours. And then you'll have a park here, a park there. You won't have any of these nice street festivals and parades. You'll have, you know, won't have our, our great police and fire. You know, there's lots of things. So you got to really be careful as you make statements about things. Just read it, and I think you'd be, be proud of what you see. So leave it at that.
Thank you. Final note, our millage is lower today than it was in 2004, in case anyone's interested. Anything else to add to the conversation for the good of the order?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that it is theoretically possible to create the enterprise fund and still calculate who pays what based on millage. So I think there's, might be a little bit of clarification needed from staff level, or, you know, some, or consultant or something, of what it is that we hope for the district to accomplish, and how, how the funding may need to be adjusted. Because at this point, millage is the only fair way I can, I can see to assess some sort of, you know, everybody's fair share. Because you go to, say, Ala Faya Woods, well, a lot of those poles need to be replaced. And then there's places, there's neighborhoods where there, the poles just hang off of wood. Well, it doesn't seem fair to assess one unit of the streetlighting assessment to people in both places.
So you're suggesting that the, how we assess it go by taxable value?
Exactly.
Oh, okay.
And, and, yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure that you all understood what I was trying to say earlier. If we do that, then we could reduce, we could look at, you know, what, what does it actually cost? What did it, what percentage of millage did it cost last budget cycle? And theoretically, reduce the, you know, the main millage by that amount, put that little bit of millage into the new thing, and it would help us track better what we're doing going forward. Our, our millage is under six mills. We've got four mills to go. Like, we could have taxes be a hundred and forty percent what they are now, and we're still, is that a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty percent what they are now, whatever the math is. And we still are not going to hit our cap. So I don't understand why we would shift the way we're doing it until we do hit the cap, but it's good to create the framework in which we can. Which brings up another question of how long is this study good for? And I don't know who to address that question, too, because we have a study that shows some different mechanisms, all which seem unfair. So we might need a whole different study down the road if we need to go further. Is that something you know, Mr. Cobb?
Mr. Cobb, are we having a workshop on this? Did I see that somewhere, where we're going to, you're going to present to us during the budget, all the, the different alternatives on how the fee can be assessed? And I thought I read that in the...
We'll be planning on having meetings, yes, sir.
Okay. And now to the council members' questions, if you can answer those for her.
As far as whether or not we can separate out the millage, and that's something I'm going to have to go to Will Dan, our, our financial advisors, and ask them that question. As far as the study, I think the study's fine. It's based on current information. Now, if we ever, any time that we would want to look at, let's say that the council did create the assessment, and as this ordinance creates the district, the geographical area, but if, let's say, the next step in council size to create the assessment, any time that we would see a, a need to a major shift in the assessment, then we definitely would want to go in and update that study. I believe this study goes for five years, I think it is. It looks out into a five-year horizon. So we'll constantly be reevaluating those, much like we do with a lot of our other fees we look at. We have certain indexing built in, but we also go out and we reevaluate those fees constantly, to make sure that what we're charging is appropriate. So, but I believe this study's good for five years.
Okay, so we could, we could sort of punt for five years and do the millage method as we evaluate, with this still being in a, in an enterprise fund, is my understanding. And maybe that's a Mr. Groot question.
That's, like I said, I would, I wouldn't want to run that by Will Dan, make sure that that was a viable option.
And we'll have them at, we'll have them at the workshop on the city.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. All righty, anything else? Seeing and hearing now, we have a motion on the table to create the lighting district. We're not implementing the lighting district at this time. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Motion carries. All righty, moving along. We are, we have no first readings of ordinances. We have no resolutions. We have no discussion items. Mr. Cobb, we're up to your report.
I have no report tonight, Mayor.
All righty, thank you. Mr. Groot?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor. In talking to Mr. Clay Simmons, the attorney representing the city, in the charter school litigation, we'd like to schedule a litigation strategy session for March 5th at 5:30. Currently, you have a CRA meeting scheduled for that time, but Mr. Cobb and I have discussed that matter, and we see no reason why that couldn't be moved to May, I mean, April, sorry, sorry, jumping ahead. And so we'd like to go ahead and schedule that for 5:30 on March 5th, and get the notices out and everything.
All righty, Mr. Groot, well, that's your call. This is your meeting, and...
Well, as long as you all don't have any problem with the CRA being moved.
Any issue, council moving it?
We do not believe it will delay a project of the CRA that would be modified in the plan.
We're still waiting for the dollars to roll in there anyway, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Groot. So the Monday, March 5th, CRA governing board meeting will, when I announce, will be canceled, and it will be a closed-door session?
Yes.
Is that what I'm announcing?
Yes, sir.
Executive session?
Executive session.
Litigation strategy with...
And we'll talk to Mr. Jones about getting the CRA meeting set for the first meeting in, in April.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Groot?
No, sir, thank you.
Councilmember, you're up.
I think National Day of Prayer may be coming up soon, and if there is consensus on council, I'd like to see us support that again, here at City Hall.
Don't we normally have a resolution?
We do.
Is, is everybody cool, moved in that direction again?
I'm okay with it.
I don't have a call.
All right, thank you very much.
There you go.
That's three.
And March 26th or so, I believe, it may be one of our first budget work sessions. Wanted to see if we could, in advance of that, get the, I guess it's the cost recovery, you know, some of the info about the fifty-three events that our Parks and Rec Department does every year. We used to not have that many, and now we've got a lot. And as we're looking at ways to trim down, and trying to prioritize how to spend taxpayer money, I think it's really critical for us to look at, you know, if we spend a dollar, how much, or, I mean, what's the, what are we getting back? I did not realize that we hadn't really discussed that for about ten years, is what Mr. Cobb was telling me. So if you guys are up for discussing that at that workshop, I think it's a worthy thing to explore a little bit more.
I think that we can get the information. We'll see where it goes. I think the citizens enjoy the events, but I'd like to speak to you.
Yeah, but, yeah, just to know, you know, where's money going? How much goes out to bring in what? And what, what things do people value and not value? And speaking of that, you're going to love this, Mr. Mayor. I think we should do visioning. And I believe you also think we should do visioning. My main...
I've been asking for four years.
My main concern is always, how are you going to pay for it? But just today, on the consent agenda, I noticed that the air handlers, good job, Mr. Bullware, you came in about ninety thousand under budget. And also, good job, Chief White, you came in about fifty-eight thousand dollars under budget on the fire department's upgrade of gear. That adds up to me to one hundred forty-eight thousand dollars. And the, last January, some of the old RFPs that I, that I had looked through, I think Mr. Cobb had circulated those, so we could think about whether we wanted to update them. I saw the price tag, I thought, how, how can it happen? But my understanding is, that money, the, these savings from those two consent agenda items, goes back to the general fund, and that could enable us to do it immediately, like this year.
And staff may have something else that they're planning the money for. I mean, I'm all for it, but why don't we talk about it March 26th and see what the budget looks like?
Could we talk about it sooner? They could at least go out and do RF, is it RFPs, RFQs? I'm not sure what the difference... They could at least go out and do RF, is it RFPs, RFQs, I'm not sure what the difference between those is exactly.
So, you're gonna do, council?
RFP, RFPs, could we, could we perhaps work on that, so we at least have something to look at come March 26th? Or sooner?
Well, I think you just leave it in the budget, budget cycle, and, you know, again, I don't think there's any secret, I'm not a fan of spending $150,000, you're talking about a streetlight fee, and we're gonna see what's going on 50 years in the future, I don't, I don't care, I wanna take care of it today, and as Councilman Britton says, I got all these master plans that, that we paid for that aren't even done yet, I think at, at some point, we need to do that, though, but not, not now, we've got too much stuff going on, so, just keeping it real.
I'd like to see it brought up at the budget session, let's base it off of the old RFPs that we have, the cost, and let's see if we can work it in where it would be amenable to everybody.
That sounds good.
All right, that's all I've got.
All righty, thank you. Deputy Mayor, you're up.
Okay, a couple of things here, first of all, I see an email here that Linda DeBonis is leaving us, I just wanna wish Linda all the best of luck to her and her family, how many years has she been here?
City, 12.
12, so, she's, she's been a great service to the city clerk's office and to all of us, so, I wanna wish her well, I did go to the Orlando EDC barbecue event, and as usual, you meet people there, I met a fellow that owns a custom woodworking shop in Sanford, and he says, we wanna move to Oviedo, so I've got his, I've got his contact information, I gave it to John Jones, I'm, I'm gonna ask John to reach out to them, and see what they're looking for, and see if we can get him over here. Oviedo Bay Ruth opening, is that Saturday?
This Saturday.
This Saturday, and what about the Oviedo Little League?
I have not heard from them, have you?
It's the 20th.
It's this Saturday, too?
Are they both at 8:30 in the morning, or 9 o'clock in the morning?
9 o'clock.
Why don't we, we'll split duties up, we'll figure out who's gonna go where.
Yeah, we gotta, I may be going out of town, but I'll, I'll see what I can do.
You'll be out of town? All right, well, why don't we all just coordinate with each other, and we'll figure out who's gonna go where, and we'll have representation at both.
Okay. Next item, the senior committee met last week, we're gonna meet again next week, I think we got consensus with about a dozen folks to start a bowling league, so Drew will be in touch, there's a fellow that I know that's willing to head it up, I'm gonna get with him this week, and we'll, we'll start working on that.
Steve's a senior, can he join?
Yes, you can be, you can be the...
How old you gotta be to get in that?
55. Yeah, you're 60, aren't you?
Long way to go, but I'm glad to help you out.
Okay.
Hey, I wanna ask you, do you make that to be a formal committee yet, or are you still in the...
I think we're still in the forming stage.
Are you still gathering your ideas?
I wanna thank Patrick, too, while I'm thinking about it, for all the help he's putting into that, Patrick, good job, I think we're still in the data gathering stage, and then, I think, maybe in March, we'll start compiling everything we have, and, and in April, we'll either have a, a community event, or we'll come up with some recommendations, and then we can go from there.
Right.
And finally, Chief Coleman, I wanna thank you, I, I saw an email come across my desk from one of the social media sites of a traffic issue over near Parton, and passed it on, and the feedback I got as you guys went out there and are looking at it, and they feel safer already, so, appreciate the, the backup on that, and that is my report.
Excellent, thank you. All righty, we're up to myself, and first item I'd like to bring up, and I'll be quick because I have three of them, Mr. Cobb, we've talked about this for many years, and it always seems to stall, you know, microbreweries are very popular right now, everywhere in a lot of the cities, and just everywhere in the country, and I've been contacted by two different microbreweries looking to relocate or open up here in the city, beyond the one going over at the mall, but the way our code is set up, it becomes next to impossible, is, is there a way, with council consensus, after you answered the question, that we might be able to get something back to us in a, in a reasonable amount of time, 30, 60 days, where we can change the way we treat the different licenses, and, you know, perhaps accommodate this type of business?
I would say yes, but not in 30 to 60 days, just because of the state mandated public hearing process.
Okay.
Yeah, we, it would require three public hearings.
I meant to us to make a decision.
Oh.
And then, and then obviously, you have to go through the...
Right, we have to get...
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear, I apologize.
I mean, if you wish to have, just like a discussion I wanted, then we can, we could have something ready for you at the, the next meeting.
Because I really think it just, as you and I briefly discussed the other day, it has to do with the way we treat these classes of licenses, right, fours, threes, twos, I don't know much about them.
It, yes.
And then the manufacturing of it, because that becomes another issue.
That's another part, one we have to look at, you have to look at, what zoning districts do you feel that it is a viable, or what should, where it should be a permissible use? Then, yes, sir, we do have to deal with the city's current alcoholic beverage rules, and we have, we have, we have a clause in our code that says that a no certificate, which is the license, would be issued for a bar or cocktail lounge unless it's associated with a restaurant, and so we have to, we have to work around that, because a lot of times, these things can be construed as a bar, and so we have to be able to definitively address that issue, not only from a land use perspective, but also from the certificate, as you talked about, the certificate perspective, because the different certificates deal with different types of selling of alcohol.
Okay, you know, because they, they, they like to habitat in, you know, older areas, older buildings, you know, cooler vibe, is there consensus from council for them to bring something back to us on this?
Yes.
So, maybe, from staff's perspective, what districts would be most appropriate, and then we can kind of take a peek and see if we agree, but...
And just a, just an overall discussion on why, why we're not, why they're not allowed right now, as well, just to get, you know, for some of us to get a better understanding of what the, what the issues are with...
Did you wanna have them also without, without food, or...
Yeah, well, that's, with, microbreweries can, you know, operate...
Change it a little bit.
Yeah, change it a little bit, sometimes what they do is, instead of having a kitchen, you know, they bring food in.
Yeah.
And, like Red Cypress, for instance, you know, Red Cypress, when they went to Winter Springs, they looked here, we couldn't accommodate them.
They're all over.
We couldn't accommodate them here because of, well, we had multiple issues, I mean, the manufacturing, the, and the, and the part about the different alcohol licenses, and the only spot they can go was by the asphalt plant, or something like that, so, Red Cypress is one of them, but the...
Actually, the only spot they could go is Oviedo on the Park.
Right. Yeah, well, that's where one of them is, is looking now, and another one of them is looking in the old historic downtown area as a tap room.
Right.
But, you know, there's, there's challenges, and...
They're not, they're, they're...
Thousand square foot tap room isn't gonna ruin our city.
But we can, I, I think there, I think there's ways that we can address, and to address Mr. Pollak's question, these, these rules predate me, they were here when I got here, so, this is part of the history that I'm not sure about, to be honest with you, but we'll see if we can dig around, find something.
And then over the years, it just gets intertwined into the code, trying to unravel it is a great mystery. All righty, thank you, council, and thank you, Mr. Cobb, well, I told her I wasn't gonna do this, but then I told her I was gonna do this, but we have the new president of the Oviedo Winter Springs Chambers here in our audience tonight, Bridget, why don't you stand up and be recognized, give her a round of applause? We have the former president as well, Todd, why don't you stand up, great job you've done over the years, good luck in your new venture.
Thank you.
Todd called me the other day just to shoot the breeze, and in his new office, he evidently has a TV that he can watch NASCAR on while he works, so, good for you, Todd, and Bridget, you're gonna do a great job, knock, knock 'em dead. Last thing I have is, we have the State of the City coming up, that's going to be March 7th over at the amphitheater at Oviedo on the Park, it's gonna be 5:30 PM is the start with the food trucks, this year, they commandeered Dixie Fried Chicken, right, old Dix, hm? Old Dixie Fried Chicken is coming in Jeremiah's Ice, so they'll be there at 5:30, for those who wanna grab a bite to eat, the State of the City will start at 6:30, we do start fairly promptly, and as an added bonus, this year, I believe staff has figured out a way that we are going to be able to live stream it over the internet, so for those who can't actually make it out, you'll be able to watch it live at home, and then, just like last year, the video will be put up, the PowerPoint will be put up, everything will follow after the State of the City within about a week's time or so, so with all that being said, that is the end of my report, and we move on to Councilman Pollak, you're up.
So, when they livestream this, can, can we put a little emojis, like sad faces, smiley faces, and stuff?
Sure. Now, if you come down to the State of the City, you'll be able to ask everybody questions afterwards when I'm done, as we're walking around. If you come down to the State of the City, obviously, when I'm done, whatever members of council are there, and myself will be milling around, you can ask us questions from home, you wouldn't be able to do that, some of you may yell at the TV and throw things, so there's may clap and cheer, who knows? Anyway, Bob, go right ahead.
Just a few items, the new round, or the landscaping at the roundabout looks awesome, although there's been, been a few, truck, three trucks?
Three hits already.
I pulled through it today with my travel trailer and didn't hit it, so I'm doing all right with that one.
Was that you who hit the rocks?
No, I didn't hit the rocks.
Was there really a car up on two rocks, I, somebody told me, that's awesome, kind of awesome, goes slow.
But, but no, that, that looks great, really nice, and it'll be, it'll be really great if we can intertwine that with our arts committee, and maybe put a nice piece of artwork in the middle of it as well, so, the, Drew, at the Aquatic Center, the lighting there is really poor right now, there's a lot of lights out, I was there a couple nights ago, and, and it's really dark, there, you know, there's, should be four lights on some of those poles, and there's only one functioning, that we need to try to get those taken care of, the, the new intersection, Bobby, at, at, where Henson Court, the, the East Bridge, there's a container there, and I've had some people complaining that it's blocking their vision when they're trying to, to come across, if they're going, I guess they would be going westbound to turn into the, the Ala Fae Woods over there, there's a container on that one side that makes it, makes it difficult to kinda, actually, I'm sorry, they would be going into Kingsbridge East, but they can't see the traffic coming, there's a container, I know, and I, also, the, the sign, I think it just says that the intersection's gonna be closed, and you had sent out that it's only closed during a few hours during the day, so during rush hour, it is open, so I don't know if you can maybe tweak that sign a little bit, so that people know the hours, I, I wasn't, I didn't personally see it, but someone had brought it to my attention that, you know, you're closing my intersection. The, the Pond Project, it was on the, the agenda tonight, I'm really excited about, you know, seeing the, the park around that, that, that looks great, and to continue that on, if there's, I, I think that there's some other projects for, for stormwater, for, for stormwater in that area that we may wanna look at, and, and continue that, that project on, with, with Citizens Bank and stuff, so, and then, on another note, to kinda change directions, the, the tragedy that happened this past week, the, I, I, there was a lot of people that reached out to all of us about this, and what we could do to, to prevent this kinda stuff, and, and I, one of the things that I would really like to do is to have, and, and maybe bring the county in, because I know the county did a lot of work the last time something like this happened, to have a brainstorming and, and information session, maybe over at the COP Center, or over at the Culture Center, we could, we could notice the meeting so that all of us could attend, and, and just, you know, sit down with the community and, and come up with some solutions, I know our hands are tied by, by some state legislation and federal legislation on what we can do about firearms, but I think that we can maybe come up with some solutions, and, and us as a governing body, like we've done with other things, may, may need to reach out to our, our elected officials in Tallahassee and/or in DC to, to talk about this, so, maybe we can put that on the calendar, Chief Coleman, if you could help me out with that a little bit, that we could kinda, kinda work towards that, and kinda see what we can do, because that, that event, I mean, it hits home to a lot of us, that have high school age kids, and in fact, one of the victims had the same last name as me, so when I was looking at the list, that, that really got to me as well.
Can I help you out with that just a little?
Yes.
I, I would almost definitely invite the Sheriff's Department, and I would almost definitely invite somebody from the school district, I don't know who they'd wanna send, but, because there are certain things that can be talked about, and there's obviously certain things that, that can't be, but, but the point is valid.
Right, so, and that's all I have.
Oh, okay. Last one, Councilman Hankin, you're up.
All right, I had that, that on my list, too, and I think it's a great idea, you know, we've had, we've had some students reach out to us, and...
That was a very well-written email.
Oh, thank you.
What was that, the one that you sent her back?
Yeah.
And what was her name?
I have her on my email, but we've, we've got...
She copied me.
Yeah, we've gotten, you know, we have some, I had an email from a 16-year-old over at the high school, sent me an email, and, you know, very, very concerned, you know, clearly, clearly at 16, a future leader of the city, very concerned about what, what happened, and, you know, basically saying, you know, enough is enough, when's it gonna stop, and, and as Councilman Pollak said, you know, there's, there's not so many things that we can do as a body, but I, I did assure her, and I, I mean, I can assure, as the mayor just said, you know, there's so many things out there that you don't see, that we are...
Shawna Rogers.
Shawna Rogers.
Oh, Shawna, yeah, and there's so many things that are going on that you don't see, we got a really nice phone call, I think everybody got it, it was one of the robo-calls from Amy Lockhart, the school board chairman, you know, basically assuring the kids that, you know, everything is being done, that can be done, I know our police department, working with the sheriff, you know, everything in these schools here are being, you know, looked at and, and taken care of, so, but, yeah, that was, that was very close to home, so I know that, that, you know, the city of Oviedo sends our thoughts and prayers down to South Florida, I mean, it's just, it's unimaginable, I mean, it's just, it's really getting crazy, I have a feeling, though, if, you know, each one was so monumental, but I have a feeling, and I don't know what the answer is, but I think something's gonna happen here, you know, I mean, I think it's got everybody's attention even more so now, it should've happened after the first one, but, but, you know, let's hope we don't have any of that, again, so on a positive note, you know, something you may not know of, I don't know how you all feel about it, but I was reading some stuff from the legislature today, I've always liked this idea, but it looks like, you know, we never know until it gets voted on, but Florida may have daylight savings time all year round, they, they seem like they passed it in the House, the Senate is on board, so I guess they have a few more things, but, you know, Florida's an outside, you know, state, you know, there's a lot of beach time and everything, so, I've always said, you know, why do we have to take these clocks down, and it's dark at 4:30, it's, it just doesn't make sense to me, so, looks like that may be, may be coming to Florida soon, they've actually talked to the federal government, that like, how do we coordinate, you know, airlines and everything, so that may, that may be something coming, I'm looking forward to, I hope that passes.
It's gonna mess up live TV.
Yeah, well, whatever, you know, how about in California, you know, shows are starting at 5 o'clock out there, you know, so, but I, I think that'd be good, the State of the City, I think a lot of times, you know, some folks come out and they see us every so often, if you can make it to the State of the City, it's really a very good hour, because after every State of the City address that, that I've seen in the city that the mayor has given, people are like, wow, I had no idea that was going on, no, I didn't know about this, and they walk away refreshed, and, you know, and, and these times, it's tough to not go home and turn on the news, and you go to bed, and you're like so depressed, but, you know, you know, the government closest to the people affects the people the most, and I think there's a lot of positive stuff happening in the city, a lot of years, a lot of hard work by the staff, by the council's president and past, so, if you get a chance, at least watch it on the stream, you come away and you say, well, you know, at least in my own backyard, things are, things are going pretty well, so, and you do a great job with that always, so, that is the mayor's night, you know, we used to have all of us up there, and it got to the point where, you know, it, it's too diluted, so, when Dominic gives it, it comes out good, so, try to, try to come out and, and see that, Chief, we got your flyer, Chief White, on Memorial Day, we have our, our ceremony out there honoring veterans on, and that... We have our, our ceremony out there honoring veterans, and that is such a great ceremony, and the, the person who spoke last year, I forgot his name, but, oh my...
Sergeant Major.
Yeah, Sergeant Major, what a, you walked away and you had chills, so he, I don't know if he's coming back this year, but, oh my goodness, he was, he was incredible. That's Monday, May 28th, at 9:00 AM, right here at our, our veterans tribute at Oviedo on the Park, so if you're in town...
He spoke this year at the Methodist Church, at their, their luncheon that they do for the veterans, and, yeah, he's, he's good.
He is very special, and then last but not least...
That's two colonels here, just pick one.
There you go. Two great colonels, right there, Colonel Bob and Colonel Jim, right there. And then last but not least, budget stuff. You know, some of the best ideas, you know, don't always come from up here, and some of the worst ideas could come up from here, but if anybody out there has any ideas, because we're going into that process, hey, you know, it looks like you guys could do better doing this, please send it to us, because every year, it's, you know, it starts in March and it goes through to, you know, October, September, October, when we finally get to it. If you got any ideas that can help us out, or something that we might've missed, or our